Hello, how are you?
Good. I don't know. Do it by hand.
Do you mind?
We joked that he really slowed down when it was raining instead of so hot it'd be nice to live with the rain. It's very hot.
Well, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, here in time. Yeah. We have kids out on the softball fields.
And baseball. And horses.
Horses. Decent share. I'm sure our athletic director talked to our coaches about the heat.
As a matter of fact, I did.
Well, the positive thing is your jump is pretty short tonight. But not the one, nah. Not the one thereafter. You go, one next week. We're gonna have three, three in a row.
Yes.
Thanks, Kim.
It's like a four age pledge and stuff. Martin. It's like a Mike Split and a four age pledge and stuff.
Well, good evening. How's everyone doing tonight?
Good.
Delightful. Uh, we've called the meeting order of East Porter County Board. Order on this Monday, July the twenty eighth. This is a work session. And to start off, would we please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, I'd certainly consider anybody that's sitting in the chairs part of the public that we have, whether employed by the school corporation or not, but is there anybody to sign to speak this evening? No. Then we'll just, uh, move forward. And the first item on the agenda is number two, A, review capital projects and bus replacement plan. So in front of you, we are just presenting one last time before we bring it to you for your approval next Monday. And just a friendly reminder, we do have a public board meeting next Monday the fourth, as opposed to the eleventh, uh, in an effort to ensure that we can get our teachers on staff because schools start back up with the teachers on the eleventh and the students are the, uh, thirteenth. So, uh, we just wanted to, uh, present the capital projects plan one more time. I know there were some questions in regards to what it would cost, uh, if we were to add tennis courts or lights or, uh, just one. As a gentle friendly reminder, the board has asked us to find ways to cut costs. And if we were to add lights, uh, we would be adding utility costs. And this month, uh, we did finally get our NISCO bills and we received a seventeen percent increase in our utility bills. So as we look forward to that, we did include the information. However, you will notice that we did not put any of those onto the actual capital project plans, but it is for your discernment and your information.
So you hear that?
Yeah, we didn't know if you had any additional questions, thoughts, simply because, like I said, we will be bringing this to you, uh, next Monday, uh, for approval so that we can start with our budgeting process. You may have any questions or comments?
When you say seventeen percent, can you put that into actual dollars?
I cannot.
It doesn't have to be.
We spent about a billion dollars a year in, I guess, electric, so seventeen percent is out there.
Pretty significant.
Yes.
Uh, and when I first came to use our utility bills, closer, I remember serving right six fifty-ish. Um, but I know over the past six years, we're approaching right there at a million dollars. I think even two years ago or a year ago, it was, I think, around eight hundred.
Do you anticipate that being a yearly increase or that we don't know?
I think this was their total. This was more part of it. There's another increase happening with this. If I was understanding correctly.
And that's one reason why we are, um, looking at some different alternatives. And we will, I know, we've got a couple of companies that are looking at what it would cost to like the solar. Just trying to offset the re- the usage. Concern that I have with going solar is when do we produce the most solar is when we don't have school. However, in walking through some of our buildings, it would offset our ability to, um, increase the amount of AC that we're utilizing, uh, because we would be able to offset it and not have to necessarily pay the utility for it. And so it might, um, create a little bit, uh, more gentle environment, reducing humidity and some of the concerns that come up in the summertime because of the lack of air conditioning in there. But it doesn't make, um, efficiency and economical sense for us to run air conditioning too much when there's no kids and people in the buildings.
Is there any possibility of selling our extra back to the grid?
No, we, we used to be able to net meter, uh, but that has since gone to the wayside so much. I know there, there is still, for a short period of time, um, potential of like a rebate on going with solar, but also no current, uh, administration is looking to reduce. We wouldn't be able to, well, we may not be able to take advantage of that if we wait too long to go on that. Any other questions?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm just still, I'm still on that. So there's no way, even though summer's generally when the electric company has the higher demand, how, you confirm that like through the electric company or is it through legislation? Like, I just want to be clear where our no came from.
Sure, uh, when we were looking into it earlier, um, there wasn't that metering where you were able to hold on to it and then just come back. The difficulty that we have, and I can find some clarity on that. I know the school is not allowed to be a utility service, so we can't sell utilities. It has to do similar to conversations we've had about our wastewater treatment.
Okay.
Because we wanted to do that except for, we're trying to find ways to, to help with that, to be able to generate revenue that would even help offset the cost of that.
Right.
And so there, there are some things that being that we can't necessarily, for profit, are selling out.
I was wondering if there's anything through the, um, companies that we could go through to say, they're not going to pay us for it, but we get that amount of credit towards future bills.
That was the net metering that we had. Yes, they have eliminated that over, oh gosh, it goes back, um, when, when I was working at KB and we built the solar fields, we were looking at differences along those lines and the net metering cut decreasing because the utility companies didn't want to necessarily lose that revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions?
So just in looking at the calendar, so the August fourth meeting, I'll ask for your permission to advertise those two plans. Then, uh, on September eighth and October thirteenth, those are our two budgetary budget approval meetings, and so we're looking at. Passing those.
And those meetings will be held here and after we finish up with that budgeting process, then we will start, um, doing our meetings out in the buildings. We, we just have to know where they're at because we have to publish, uh, those positions before that.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is two B, Policy eleven zero two, Board Member Effects. So I put this one on the agenda simply because there were some questions and some conversation that went back and forth between board members at our last public meeting. And, um, I know that I just wanted to ensure or to see if there are any changes that, uh, the board was looking to have made in that particular one. Because I will be presenting that on Monday for the second reading and for the board's consideration of approval. Didn't know if there was anything that we needed to have further discussion. Uh, it's unfortunate that not all of our members are here tonight. Uh, because we know Mr. Martin made some comments on that as well. But at the same time, I just wanted to give opportunity for work on the policy if work helped or needed to be additional work.
I thought the policy was fine as a group.
Okay.
I know Bob had some concerns and I had agreed with them. I did do some more research. So the Noblesville School Corporation that we've kind of taken as a board of excellence, I guess, um, has this exact verbiage in it. I looked at my high school's, uh, corporation and they use this exact verbiage. I'm comfortable moving forward with it. Does anyone have any concerns?
I did not.
I, the only thing that I thought about was, um, and it's not really, it's more of a medical stuff. It's just, um, on the very, very last one of, um, uh, under a board member should mean responsibilities to his community by, um, it says winning the community's confidence. I was just thinking gaining. Winning just, I don't know, I don't know what that, how you can solidify what that means besides, I guess, like, how do you win? You know, like I took it as gaining with community. It's just a verb. I don't know. It's not really a big thing. It was just very, very simple. Um, and then I did wonder if all the his, just would say like his orders. So I just appreciate that as well.
Yeah.
It says a board member should mean their responsibility to his community. It should say his orders.
Yeah, it's just changing.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's all.
Any, any else?
A good Dr. Case? Yeah, so is everybody in agreement in regards to like me to look at a different word as opposed to winning?
You don't love winning.
I love to win.
I love winning, especially in family, uh, board games.
But I don't love it in this. In some, I don't know if I love gaining either, not to like get further revenge, but.
You've got something absolutely.
Would you like me, uh, yeah, actually, what I don't, Ernie, our buddy, AI, Ernie?
Oh, Ernie.
Ernie?
Yeah. That'd be a good one.
Yeah, thank you.
I just, I just didn't like winning, winning season.
Anybody else? Good, thank you. Next item is two C, Athletic Discussions in regards to Cut Process and Facility Utilization. So tomorrow I'm meeting with our athletic directors. Um, as you know, we have two new ones that will be starting with this. And I just want to help them get ready inside for the year. Over the summer, there's been a couple of things that have come across my desk. And, um, there's been some concerns, uh, that have been brought to me in regards to cuts is one of them. So we'll just go on a sequence on here. So it has been East Porter's philosophy that, especially at middle school, we really try not to cut students because we want to make sure that they get the opportunity, uh, and the exposure because we're trying to develop to see what kids like. Uh, you don't know what, what their interests are until you, until they get that particular exposure. But at the same time, one of the positive things is that, um, we have, we're starting to experience a large influx of students' interest in, um, different activities. And we want to make sure that we are taking care of growing them because not only is the middle school program an opportunity for exposure, but it's also a feeder system to help grow our varsity athletics and set them up for success as well. There gets to a point where too many students can create a safety concern. Too many students can also get to a point where students don't get the exposure and they don't get the opportunity to play. Uh, for example, and Mr. Booth, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've got about thirty students right now interested in playing softball. And when you're watching. And when you're looking at thirty students on a softball team, it's hard to get the time to, uh, work with the students who improve the skills. It's hard to get, um, and it's also safety if you don't have enough people that are out there to, to watch. So the other part that I want to do is I also want to be very cognizant to know that there are times where it happens. There are times where we can have thirty kids out and there are times for some of our sports, we don't even have enough to, uh, field the team. So what I would like to do is tomorrow I'm going to be charging our athletic directors to come up with some processes about when to be cut, how do we cut, what is that, what does that process look like? Simply so that it's standardized, so it doesn't matter if you're Calhoun, Morgan, or Washington Township. We're following the same protocol. So starting with that, I would, my goal tonight is to get input from the board with some direction that we can meet with our athletic directors to come to you with a proposal. One of the things that I have found is if we can get some input before, I just want to make sure we're going down the right pathway as opposed to putting all the time and effort to say, all right, we have an idea. Yeah, no, this is the direction we would like to go. So we're trying to figure out a little bit which of, um, the dichotomous path that we want to go down, um, before we bring you all a proposal. So just looking to pick your brain graciously. We've got representation from each of the three campuses here, uh, simply so that if you had any questions or thoughts as we're going through, we can create a little bit of dialogue, knowing that the majority of the labor for this, for parties later, we're just looking for a little bit of direction tonight. And we'll start with cuts.
When you say middle school, that's sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade softball.
Or not just thirty and seventh and eighth.
Right.
That's including some sixth graders, yes. Yeah, we actually, we have a large class, which is also why Dr. Case had mentioned that we want to make sure that there are, there, we, our cognitive ebbs and flows. We have a very large sixth grade class. Um, that's, yeah, that's very interested in playing and so that, that does increase the amount of kids. But yeah, thirty's a lot.
And we've got eighty-four kids in fifth grade at Washington Township, so we know that we could have a big flux in there. It's, and the other part that I want to look at is not just the middle school, but at the same time, we also have, and I believe Mr. Martin was telling me that we've got a volleyball jury, maybe you can help me out. We've got a number of seniors that are on the, um, girl volleyball team, which maybe five of, is it seven seniors potentially on the volleyball team?
Six or seven.
Six, okay. Where not very many of them will actually see too much playing time, potentially. I, I'm just going off of conversations and so I'm not aware, but.
Yeah, I can't speak for that right now.
Just looking at that, is there something that we look at too? And, and here's the nice thing about the, um, small school, and I've always been a, a big advocate, you're going to have some upperclassmen students because of the soft, the size of it, where they can still be on the team and that's more for the creativity and the fellowship of it as opposed to just for the, um, competition. And as long as the students are clearly communicated ahead of time, um, I know that sometimes people still get a little bit frustrated, especially if they're senior, um, where they may want a little bit more time. But I think as long as we are clearly communicating those particular roles, just something else we need to take into consideration.
When it comes to softball and baseball, are we still implementing that the sixth graders practice but not play?
So that's actually the conversation that we've been having, uh, is that they get the chance to practice, but yeah, the playing time is not there for them. Um, it's more about the exposure, right? And then developing some skills and getting to know the coaches. Um, and it's really the same way with, uh, track for us as well. Our middle school track had a hundred kids in a year. So, but did they all travel? No, they did not. It was seventh and eighth grade time trial based, um, who traveled so that we could fit on one bus. Um, but at home meets, they would, and it was communicated ahead of time before the season started, that these kiddos would, i- if we had enough time and the, and, and the starter was okay with it and the opposing teams were okay with it, we'd run multiple heats so that kids were given opportunities when applicable.
I just know when my boys were going through middle school baseball, that was the most, sixth graders practiced. They did not play.
Even if they were better than the seventh, eighth graders?
They did not play. It was clearly communicated at the parents' meeting. They would not play. They, I don't even think they were given uniforms.
Yeah, I had that conversation with our softball coach today because he feels that there's a sixth grader or two that would be far superior to the seventh and eighth graders and he wanted to know what direction to go. Um, and, but that's kind of the policy we followed at Calhoun's. Um, that sixth graders just were there for practices and if you got a B game, they could play in a B game. But then it goes back to, okay, we're going to have twenty-six softball girls this year, according to our softball coach. So, um, fourteen seventh and eighth graders and twelve sixth graders. So he's like, how do I, when the sixth graders are better than the seventh and eighth graders, what, he wants to know what to do there. And so I told him between this meeting and the meeting tomorrow with the ADs and Dr. Case, I thought we could all come to some kind of agreement somehow, some way, maybe that we could address that issue. But, um, I, I do worry a little bit about cutting middle school kids and the direction we would go with that. But I will say last year, I'm aware of the situation at Calhoun's with middle school girls volleyball and it was a nightmare because we had more girls than playing time would allow to fit in. And you want to be competitive. I'm not saying you want to win every match, but you want to be competitive. And when you're not developing your better athletes, I think that sometimes hinders the varsity programs down the road as well. So it's, it's not an easy thing.
Never, it sounds like sixth graders didn't get to play, but we've never had tryouts over speed and cut.
Right. As, as the basketball coach, I can tell you, I'm not a fan of cutting middle school kids, especially boys, because they tend to develop later. Uh, girls sometimes go through maturity sooner and so you might, but you can't discriminate based on being boys versus girls, when you cut and when you don't. But I, I just know that we've had some kids that weren't very good at seventh and eighth graders end up being pretty decent players by the time they're, they're juniors and seniors just because of maturity things. Or, or maybe that boy matured quicker, was better at middle school and never really kept going, you know? So I'm be interested to see what, what, what is your feeling, your folks' feeling?
I mean, I, for me personally, I, some of it comes down to safety and uniforms. You know, that's, that's part of it. I, I think if you look at, uh, you got twenty kids on a seventh grade basketball team and you've got twenty kids on an eighth grade basketball team, you're talking about forty kids practicing together in the same gym at the same time. Uh, that's a lot of kids. And it's also, and y- you get to a point where, and I don't know what the magic number is, but you get to a point where like you're really losing repetitions for the kids that really, the, the kids that really need it. You know, and I, I agree with Kevin that, and I, as a girls' basketball coach for seven years, I, I had several kids that did not start in the middle school and did end up having some good minutes in high school. Um, very valuable, uh, minutes. But that, I think that's few and far between as opposed to the fact that if you've got twenty kids and they're all playing a quarter, that makes sense for maybe sixth grade A and B, um, where it's really just about getting the chance to dribble basketball, go out there and, and work with the team. Uh, but you really start to, you, you lose the competitiveness once you hit a certain number of kids.
I'm not really sure when the change happened, um, but it used to be with softball and baseball, it was seventh and eighth grade only. If the numbers were down, then you could invite sixth grade to come and join. And then all of a sudden, we have sixth graders. And so the numbers are, have increased, um, even though you might have enough seventh and eighth graders to field a team. So what we've done is we've created the A and B. So your, your seventh and eighth graders would be your A team. If you needed some of those sixth graders to fill in your seventh and eighth grade and then have B team games or just an extended extra inning or so to get them some game experience. Um, and I do know that our coach has been very creative. He's got quite a few volunteers. He sets up stations where they rotate. They're each supervised, um, taking that safety issue out of it. You've got an adult with each group. So, so I'm not really sure. I, I'm not in favor of cutting. I'm in favor of accommodating. I do know that when I coached basketball and had middle school, I had twenty-two basketball players one year. Um, and so what I would do is I would run a three hour practice, an hour and a half with half the group, an hour and a half with the other half of the group. They were split into four groups so that each day they would practice with the different groups so that they were used to working with each other. And on game days, they knew that, you know, first quarter, I'm putting, starting five out there. We're going to do as well as we can. Third and, uh, second and third quarters, you kind of fill in, subbing in the rest of the players and then you want to finish strong that fourth quarter. So there's, there's coaching techniques that just need to be learned and adapted.
Is it hard finding other schools that have sixth grade teams or?
No, as a matter of fact, with, uh, basketball, there's some out there with fifth grade teams that we can do, like our sixth grade is alone, but if we have an A and a B squad, that B squad is playing fifth grade. So we, you know, search out those schools to, to set up games with. Um, and with, we're not the only ones with this problem anymore. So South Central, we can set up an A and a B game. It will grow, A and a B game. So the games are out there.
I just hate to not only, I just hate to have our kids going home and looking at their screens more. Like if they're interested in a sport and want them to be healthy and pursue fitness in some aspect. I, how do you guys feel about like if, if we're in a year where we have really high numbers? Like do we have the manpower or the parents to have like an intramural where they're not, they're just got pennies on and they're playing each other and we can kind of see if anybody develops from those?
Gym time would be.
That's what I was gonna say.
Gym time, okay.
That would be a seven o'clock start for intramurals.
Or six in the morning.
Or six in the morning, yeah. And you've got parents dropping them off. That's the other thing is it wouldn't be drivers. It'd be parents, but I love that idea though.
And I think it boils down to communication at the very beginning so that everybody has an understanding of what this season is going to be for and player development so that you don't get disgruntled kids and disgruntled parents later saying, well, why is my kid not playing?
So did the sixth graders say, Morgan, was today, the girl softball, did they know that there's?
So we're still up in the air. So we've had a conversations with the coach. Uh, it started with, then when we brought on, uh, Lydia Taylor as our AD, um, she's kind of taken over. Um, but the conversations have really been that our sixth graders are there for practices.
Okay.
Um, we had looked at, when we had, when we figured out we had this magic, this big number of thirty, that we would do a B with, you, your, B would be your secondary level kiddos. Um, and then sprinkle in some sixth graders and just make sure that it's fair, that they all get the same opportunities to play. So if you got six games, you know, you got, you bring up two per game and give them an opportunity to get into that game, in a B game. So that way they get experiences at a little bit lower level, um, but they still get the press. So in, in my eyes, that seemed to be the best negotiation. Um, because I, the last thing I, the last thing I want to do is cut kids and, and you can't, I, I can't see a world where you kind of sixth grader, they've never even played before. How, how do you give them any opportunity? So, um, that seemed to be the best compromise, I guess, in this situation.
Sir, you, your daughter is on a traveling team?
She is now, yes.
So do they play during the week or just on weekends?
Uh, for the travel, it's just on weekends.
Okay. So she might do both.
She will not be joining the Morgan middle school team.
Okay. Okay. Okay, well, I, I, I like the idea of not cutting the, the B plan because they're, you're developing their skills. You're exactly right. Like, I'm their freshman or sophomore, they might be the best players you have on the team. What do you, my best D guys, you expressed your opinion. And I, I agree, they shouldn't just go home and be on screens.
But what, what do you do, though, when you have 24 girls in, in seventh grade that want to play volleyball? And you can play six at a time, there's three, three, if you're lucky, you get to play three games in a match if the other team or you went in too. How, I mean, we can communicate all we want in the world, but at the end of the day, the parents still want to see their kid out there touching the volleyball. But then you've also got those parents that are like, you know, they can't pass the ball. Why don't we play kids that can pass the ball so we can be more competitive? I, I don't know the right answer. I'm not, I'm not saying your idea is wrong or. Cause I'm, I'm a firm believer in kids, give kids an opportunity. But I, I just don't, it's, it really puts coaches, I think, in a real bind with parents. And we can tell them in the meeting upfront, parent meeting, hey, we got 24 girls. You gotta understand, some girls are gonna play, some girls aren't. And, and as a high school coach, in the back of my mind now, where are those kids gonna transfer to? And who am I gonna lose? Because we can transfer via the IHSA one time with minimal penalty, if any. I, I don't want to lose our kids because, you know, we don't let our good ones play enough to develop enough so that at the high school level, we're more competitive versus, well, let's keep everybody happier and spread the playing time out a little bit. I, I think the baseball and softball coaches have, at least at Calz, I think they're open to the idea that sixth grade's just instructional. They don't need the, the playing time in baseball and softball. And then our other sports at middle school, the sixth grade has their own basketball teams. And we don't have enough track kids that it becomes an issue for us right now that, I mean, we don't have 100. And, and at our meets, we always run, I tell the opposing coach, you got 20 kids to run 100, get them down there and we'll fire the gun four times if I have to, to get those kids in. They get timed only, they don't get placed, but at least they get to run the 100 or the 400 or, you know, what, throw or launch or whatever. So, cause as a track coach, I wanted those kids to continue to compete so that maybe they win in high school, so.
In, in sports like basketball and volleyball, I've been places where we've had player managers, and again, communicating that there's a certain skillset that's gonna be required for you to put on a jersey on game night. That in volleyball, you have to be able to pass effectively 30% of the time so that you're not just out there shanking and, and, you know, you get fans in the stands that are, why is that kid out there? You know? And again, you, you communicate that, I, I, we want you to be a part of the team, but here, here are a minimum set of competencies that we need you to do. And in the meantime, yes, you can travel with us and be a player manager.
And as a coach, I'm telling you, it's my worst day ever when we try out and then I have to go to two or three young men and say, you know what? I just don't think this is the right fit. That, that's hard for me to tell somebody, I just don't think you're, you know? It, it really is. And, and I probably don't do a great job of it because I hate to disappoint them and tough. But I also know in my heart, it's the best thing for them in our program because they're not gonna be happy if they're sitting there not getting a fair amount of, of time. And, and that, that's, so as a coach, it's, it's a hard spot. But that's part of coaching too. I understand that as part of kids growing up and maturing, but it's, it's not easy.
I think, I, I think they've agreed. I think softball and baseball haven't set well. I have a kid in sixth grade, seventh grade, I'm gonna finish in eighth grade. But I liked that with those two sports, or at least for sure for baseball, my son had someone to look up to. So again, as a sixth grader, he didn't play, but he attended practice. And it was almost like he had seventh and eighth grade leaders. So again, you're, you're also changing their roles. Not only are you a player, you're also watching a lot of the sixth graders see what you're doing. So again, I, I think you guys have a really good footing on what that could look like in terms of the big numbers. And obviously, if we don't have any numbers, and so a very small team, and the sixth graders, there might be opportunity, right? Makes sense. You're right on the step, the volleyball and the basketball, I think that is difficult. I mean, I think there could be conversation if it became big enough. Again, if you've got 30 players of volleyball, you do like a tag system or like a, a card system. Like, hey, we've got red cards and green cards, and the green cards are gonna play and they're traveling tonight. Red card are, are playing tomorrow night at home. Like, you make a, two separate teams so that they get fair playing time, maybe at different locations. And then maybe you do make up a, if, if there's like a home meet and we can get that third team in, a fourth set in, because we have the time and we're at home, maybe you work that in. But I'm, I'm just wondering if you do some sort of, if it hits a certain number, again, I don't know gold number, but if it hits 25, hits 27, or even number 28, you can then divide it up, two teams of 14. And you do have different schedules. So here's, the green team goes this night. Old team, obviously, just school colors, just kidding. But you get, like, you can have two different teams, and then those teams know. And then maybe by the end, you do switch it up, because PCC, I know, comes from middle school too. And then by then, you know who your players who are a little bit stronger, and hey, this is almost working up to that position of what PCC will look like. And changing culture, I mean, I know that's very difficult because every kid, one parent wants to see, wanna see your kids play every week. Yes, you want to see them every time. But I don't know, that might be an option. Something, if you know you hit that magic number, I'm not saying, obviously, 10, you're not gonna be like, oh, it's 2-2 with 5, but. Yeah, so that's something I was thinking of, maybe doing, fitting in a certain area. You can just separate them until they work towards the PCC, and then who plays in that would be based on, again, numbers, stats. What have you hit? Who's played? Who's come to all the practices? Who's working hard? Who's putting effort in? Here are team managers, like fan base, you do like, hey, we're gonna have a, a team fan to have to show up in a certain color, and it's the rest of the team that, you know, comes to just cheer them on. It's also a really important role. So, I don't know.
There are some, like, when we play Chesterton Middle Schools and Valpo Middle Schools, what we, how we schedule it is seventh grade goes, so let's say, B. Their eighth grade comes to us, they play two games, A and B. Sam and Chesterton, we both play. But then you alternate, like, you know, eighth grade then would come to go B. You know, so that might also, the same way we communicate with baseball and softball when we have our PCC meetings, okay, which schools have the large number? And can we do that? Can you, do you have the same hosting date that we can, you know? We know we scheduled that date to play alternate, but are we both open to where we can do seventh one way, eight the other?
The other side is, not all officials are willing to stay extra. I mean, they're, they're working on a set salary, whatever you've agreed upon. And they show up and all of a sudden, you're asking them to stay another hour or, you know, whatever. Not all of them are willing to do that. And then you tell the kids, well, we're gonna try to play a extra match or a game or whatever, and then quarter, whatever the sport, and then all of a sudden, oh, wait, by the way, no, I'm not staying for that. I, you know, so I, which becomes finances and.
Well, it's a, it's a good thing to have, is that many kids want to participate and be part of something. That's, that's important. And I know that Morgan sixth grade class, well, they're in everything. They're not just courts, they're in drama, they're in all sorts of this. Which is a good thing, we want them. Cause I give you some direction, we, it's interesting. Nope, no exact word of what to be looking at tomorrow when we start having a conversation. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. I do, I don't, I'm not against cutting, only because I think sometimes if there are kids who are for sure, or maybe just the communication can be better, because I feel like sometimes there are kids who are just for sure not gonna play on game day. But, but if they think that they might, they're inviting their grandparents and everybody to come, and then we're all paying to get into those games just for them to sit at the bench. And if we could just, we're not allowed to ask about playing time, but if we could have known that ahead of time somehow, you know, then that would be different. You know, we wouldn't be bringing our whole family, so.
That's a good point, yeah.
And then something else you find in middle school a lot is, I'm just playing because my friends are out there. I'm not really inter, and now all of a sudden, you got somebody taking a spot of somebody who actually wants to get better is gonna stay with it.
Right.
I, I just, you know.
Can I say something?
So my coach tried crosshundred for a really long time, but I agree, it's, it's nice to do all the, the different things. But I, I like Mr. Field's idea of a benchmark for safety. Because, you know, for example, for like long jump, you'll have 40 longjumpers, and you have some of the middle schoolers that can't actually get into the long jump pit, which can actually be dangerous. So I know we're trying to, to help them and get them in there, but if, you know, if before the meet, you can't even make it into the long jump pit, then maybe that's not an event you should do because it could be dangerous. So we're, we're thinking on getting them rep, which is great. But I would also say that the workers, you know, you're, when you're having, you know, 50 kids throw a shot, and that's not a made up number, you're having them stay for sometimes longer than the meet is. And that's asking a lot of your workers too, and, and you know, especially in, it takes 20 people around me.
Sure.
So it's, it's that, so that, that having that benchmark, so that would be nice.
Good, thank you. Appreciate it. Good comments from everybody here. Last items, closing items. Oh, no. No? Oh, no. There's no on C. There's more on C. I've got, I've got a couple more things I want to talk to you about C. Well, that's, that's great. I want to get it. So the other part that I wanted to bring up is with the different levels of experience and skills that our students have, we do have some coaches that are offering lessons to students. And they are utilizing the facilities and grounds of the school. And that has been past practice. I believe that was even taking place before I came to these schools. Seems to be happening a little bit more. And so the question that I have before I start putting processes in place for that, because I have some liability questions. For example, if we've got a coach out there working with kids doing pole vaults, and our track season is open, and we don't have kids competing in pole vault, and somebody gets hurt, what are the liabilities for it? If we're doing practices, unfortunately, we had a student during a actual practice took a baseball off of the coach's bat to the face and broke the jaw. And if that takes place when it's not during school, just things happen. And so to ensure that we are following processes and protocols, I want to get the board's input. Do we want to continue that practice, or should they be doing that stuff outside? Or are there some things that you would like me to put into place so that we can continue it? I will tell you, we do currently have board policy, which we allow teachers to tutor. I was just about to say. By school campus, which, that doesn't happen at all schools, but that is something that we allow here at East Porter. And so whether it is being tutored for teachers or tutored for athletics, is there really a difference? Or do we just need to shore that up? So looking for some guidance on that.
Can I have her there tutoring?
But also tutoring has to happen outside of their paid time. So like, they can't do lessons while they're also doing other things because they're getting paid to coach. So it can't overlap, it has to be completely separate.
And I'm sorry, I missed your questions.
I guess, so do people get hurt during tutoring?
That's what made my brain.
I mean, I'm sure there are stories.
I think being consistent on all, just having a set foundation that, again, maybe the parent has to sign a, you know, no fault liability of, hey, you're on property, school property at your own risk, you know, during a non-season event. Again, if it's, if they're scheduling the time, pardon me, would think that, like, obviously that time set aside for the person who's wanting that event, whether it be coach or tutor. And they know who's coming, then they would be able to communicate, like, hey, I've set this time aside, you know, I've signed out or however the process works to get the field time to make sure, you know, it's empty, no one else is using it. Then there should be a process to say, hey, this is your, you have designed this thing, there's, you know, you. I, I think consistency would be fine. And you're right, I don't think anyone's in here, but what if they tripped on a pencil? Or swallowed an eraser? And now, like, our nurse is in the building, so now what do you do? Exactly. I'm just, to me, it's like, really, it's all in high school, it's all adventurous, most things. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm just thinking, it's, consistency would probably be beneficial to know that, hey, you're using the school building or something. I don't know.
Yeah, I agree.
I think for, I don't think they need to train for a sport we're not playing. Like, why would they need to do that?
Well, you would do it outside of the regular season so that you're improving your skillset. So that when season comes through, you're better.
But you said that we don't do pole vaulting?
No, we weren't doing pole vaulting yet. The season was over.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this was outside of the, um, school without.
And I know the community can use it. I mean, we have the ability for people to walk the track. It's not like, again, I expect everyone to sign a waiver, there's public property. But I think if you know people are going to be there and there's maybe more of a chance tutoring through shop, or more of a chance. Yeah, I mean, you're just in the building knowing, I don't have a seat. Like, I would as a parent, I think about what I would do. If I had my kid, hey, I'm using the school building after school hours, you just have to sign that. There's, you can't hold the school by a pole, I guess. You know, I don't know exactly how that word, verbage works, but, I mean, I, I would do it, I'd understand completely. I'm like, oh, yes, this is after hours. This is, you know, it's nice, it's convenient. I would be grateful to not have to drive to Valpo to tutor or, you know, Chesterton or somewhere. So, yeah, I would appreciate the convenience of it, but I don't know.
See, and I live in a world, I would only do it in places public like the library. Very interesting topics.
I, I mean, I don't want anybody to think that I think poorly of our coaches, but our coaching staff has been a revolving door, so we don't know what the future holds. Are there any concerns that it becomes a pay to play?
Always gonna be that perception from the other parents. Your kid's getting to play more because they're doing the extra lessons with the coach. And, and are they also paying, are you paying for those lessons?
Let's go back to communication. I think you brought an excellent point, which proves that, you know, just communicating that this is separate from a season play. Like, you know, I know it's kind of a confusing thing that you hear, and you're like, again, maybe the sixth grader, seventh grader, or just a freshman who's kind of been interested, and there's just opportunity at the school through the high school coach to improve skills, just knowing it's not the school. You know, this is an opportunity, you don't have to travel, where you don't have to go, you know, to any, to improve on whatever skill, dribbling, hitting, whatever. It's an opportunity, but it's not school related. You know, and again, I, I agree, you can't change that perception. There's going to be that perception of. But I like the opportunity. I feel like, I mean, it's very hard for working parents to get kids to go to the Crown Point or Chesterton or wherever they need to, to play ball. But if they could get more opportunities, I, I like that, it's a goal, so, yeah.
So with that being stated, because we do have, I'll get through this in a second. We, we do have coaches that are offering that, and they're not necessarily to the kids that are attending their schools. So therefore, when we're looking at allowing people to utilize our facilities, it could be Valpo, Dunland, Westville, different kids. Does that change the thoughts of them utilizing our fields and floors and?
Yes, I think it does.
I, I question if that's legal with the IHSA, though. Because I can't coach, I can't coach kids for Morgan. And I, so I don't know that I can, can charge, I, I can work with them one-on-one or two-on-one and make money off of that. I don't, I don't think that's legal with the IHSA.
Doesn't the IHSA also not allow you to have kids on your team that you have worked with in other?
Yeah, so, so if in the summer I go coach a, a basketball team someplace, those kids, because of, what was the term that they just used the other day? Pass link? They can't come to Calz and, and gain eligibility to play basketball because there was undue influence could be found that because I was working with them on the side, they come to Calz, they can't, they can't be eligible. So I really.
That, that's what I'm talking about, Kevin, is having, like, if I'm gonna do a pitching clinic, and I've got an open pitching clinic, that's not just for East Porter or Morgan kids or Calz kids. If it's a coaching clinic, it can be for any child, right? If it's a pitching clinic.
I, if, if I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, you've been at longer than me and some of you guys have. My understanding is if I'm a paid him, paid coach, I can't hold workouts for non-Calz athletes. Not East Porter athletes, I can't hold, I, I couldn't do it for Morgan, I couldn't do it for K V kids. I think I can only work with Calz kids in terms of basketball because that's the coach, the, the spot I'm employed. You guys may know, am I wrong on that? That's.
I don't know. I think that's correct.
Yeah, I don't know the exact bylaw. I do know that when I was at Morgan, we had a baseball clinic that did invite people from outside. But we just hosted the. that did invite people from outside, but we just hosted the clinic. We gave them a facility to use. And then they brought in the coaches and the routine and everything.
The instruction came from somebody else.
Right, right. So I, and I'd be more interested into what exactly the situations are that, that you're talking about.
I'm talking about people having to pay for different lessons.
See, I, I do not believe that that.
It would be like Kevin charging Kouts athletes to get extra shooting lessons.
Yeah.
And I know way back when, we ran into this with Mr. Davis at Kouts, could not give private lessons to Kouts athletes in shooting regardless of whether it was the gym, his driveway, or their barn with a cord in it.
I, I know summer is, is wild with the IHSA. They give you free rein to do a lot of things. But during season, you're limited to a certain number of contacts of, of uh, equipment uh, set times by the IHSA. And if the coach is burning one of those on one kid, he's, he's charging, that's still a contact with his team. Even though there's only one kid there, it's still part of his team. He just burnt that for the other twelve kids on his squad or eighteen kids, or however many other kids there are that, that, I, yeah, I.
And even with summer workouts or summer, the summer program, the coach can only work with his school and their feeder. So if you're in the high, you can work with your middle school, but.
And they can charge him for that?
No.
No.
No, there, I don't know where that's coming from. But that is like, well.
And, and I'll say this so that everybody hears, if that's happening at Kouts as the new idea, I need to know about it. Cause that, I really think that's against, I just say, I, I really do. I'm either that or I live in a world where I think I know that and it's wrong, but.
We can, we can discuss this tomorrow, yes? Why do I have a feeling?
It's good to know.
No, it's good to know.
If something is going on, we don't know about it. And therefore that really concerns me because it's being done without.
I appreciate your comments. It's an education here for.
Yeah, I, I do think some of this is going to stem from Morgan. And I do think it's also because he has had clinics before he came to Morgan while he was at uh, Valpo. He, he's a pitching coach. He's been a pitching coach and he's opened it up to, to anybody. He's advertising it. He's advertised it, you know, uh, publicly on Morgan Life. And I think that's what the questions, that's where the concern's coming from. And so where's the, so where's the line? You know, that's because he's been doing it for forever. That's not, and, and it's not, you know, it's not in his coaching season.
The IHSA is the line.
But is, okay.
I don't think that's for us to draw. I think it's already been drawn.
I hear, okay.
We had a good conversation for a while.
Yeah.
I don't see anything more. Any comments or thoughts in the MOU that I shared with you? Or concerns? Cause that, what I'm utilizing that for is going to be the baseline for, there's going to be some specifics for the different classes. Cause every campus is a little bit different.
Sure.
I didn't know if there was anything that stuck out. Or uh, see if you had any great concerns, because that's something that I'll be working with our athletic directors um, again tomorrow.
My computer froze up, so I might need you to help me out. I remember the line about, I think it was for Washington Township, that they were supposed to donate the balls use and that didn't.
Yeah, there was, yeah, we're, um, on Monday, you're also going to be getting um, something where they did donate some like towards a lot more and different things. But one of the questions that I do have for the board is, is there an expectation of some kind of compensation for? And I told you in there too, I know I need to change the um, because in the MOU, it says that we're responsible for field maintenance and our uh, the townships are going to be taking care of the fields during their season on that. So there are some things that need to be in there. I just know that in the past, um, the township had purchased the balls, the baseballs for the varsity seasons and stuff. And I just, is there a monetary value or is that something that you want me to work with our athletic directors and principals and townships? And just come up with something that we can find that is uh, agreeable and doable by both sides? Uh, cause currently I will tell you, we carry the um, the heavy lifting of the monetary upkeep of a field, of fields that we never even use.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the shared spaces, we're in township spaces, I don't know if there's a monetary amount, but I would like the township to feel they have a little bit of skin in the game. Like yes, we have it and we're happy to share, um, play nice with it. Right? Like respect what we have, just like we would, that we would do if we were to use their.
Cause I think there needs to be something in there that if, if there are, if there is damage or there's something that, if that needs to be addressed, and then they need to pick up.
Yeah.
Help cover the cost.
Right.
So we're there.
Um, one thing that I can see and think of also is in, in these, I think there should be something referencing um, copying keys. I would, I would like to make sure that's, you know, they don't have a right to, if they're caught doing that, that's.
Well, I had an idea about the keys. What if, um, but would it be possible to change the handle on the doors to have it be a handle with a deadbolt with a code? Cause like, when you have multiple people, then you can just give them the code and then at the end of the season, you could change that code. That's how we, that's how my business allows like several guys into a shop all day long. And then if there's a employee leaves, we just change the code. It's, it's pretty simple then. And then that way you just leave the handle unlocked and you just, that way the code just works the deadbolt. That was my idea for that.
Some of them you can even do like hundreds of codes. So you just do individual code for each person. So then you can see one code to use a lot, if one code to never use those things, right?
Then you don't even need a key.
That's great.
It is good.
Yeah. I had, I had another idea too. Let me see. Down at the bottom, where it talks about uh, the lawn maintenance, let's see. Sorry, that was, had to do with the pesticides. I just can't find it. Oh, that they would, if there needs to be weed control, that they would notify the principal that our, what if we just, I mean, would it be possible to have fields that need no chemicals? Like, so we're not putting, so that way we don't, because it says we have to notify the community, but we could just not have chemicals used.
The problem is if we don't use chemicals, then the infield's get overrun. Because the weeds come up through the um, the interior. That's basically the only spray. It's mostly infield and fence rost.
Could be, because the Morgan Township has a horticulture class, maybe there could be fields that, that you can maintain without chemicals at all.
I think no matter what, sorry. No matter what you're using chemicals, it's just a matter of which ones. And then there's, you know, you could do vinegar and.
Right.
So, but that doesn't, you know, then you're doing it more.
Yeah. So I'm talking about just not using chemicals like the poison, like the poisonous chemicals.
I can have, I will have our horticulture class investigate that, but I'm gonna, that's, I don't know if that's doable, because even if you're spraying it more, uh, then again, it goes back to um, manpower. And Washington Township is probably the area or the building that we struggle most with the manpower. Cause if you're having to go out multiple times on there. Cause I'm also trying to get them directly to be the one responsible to manage those fields.
Because Washington Township is also a certified wildlife habitat and part of that is making commitment to not use chemicals if possible.
And it is nowhere around that habitat. Those fields are far enough removed. Good point.
Um, and then the other thing was uh, that I had was about the concessions and just, you know, removing any of the food items that they would be, there was nothing in here about, because I know the one area like had an issue with raccoons or something, I don't know. But um, and I don't know if there's somebody who, you know, checks after the games to make sure that there is no food left in the concession stands. Because then you don't have to control rodents or pests. You just would manage it by removing the food sources that they're looking for.
Noted. Anything else?
What I had.
Dr. K, did I miss something here? Paragraph on the, want to make sure I'm covering all your, I'm done with C. Okay, so the next is free A tournament. I don't have anything else. Hope you have a great evening. Thanks for coming and discussing your opinions. I always value that so much. Think you guys are doing a great job. Can't wait till school starts again. Are we cooking breakfast or serving breakfast or? No? For that particular one? Eleventh is going to be extremely low key. Our goal is to get everybody out of there by nine o'clock. All right. Feedback that we've gotten is, um, they would like more time in the buildings. Okay. Sounds great. So we will be there. We will be doing the big kickoff of um, sharing that flip book with the goals and the strategic plan. Uh, we will have several vendors available for them. Uh, we, Mrs. Smith has worked with our music departments. We're going to have kids there playing. Um, their instruments for about ten minutes or so. And then, uh, we're even going to have a group of kids there greeting everybody as they come through, directing them to the, your own building, uh, just helping to get our staff and everybody reminded. We start with kids. So next meeting is the fourth, August the fourth. There is no meeting on the eleventh, but that's when school starts. Correct. That'll be our, for the kickoff. Teacher, yep, that'll be our teacher kickoff and that will be held at Morgan Township in the main gym. Okay, the varsity gym.
Some more detailed information from your local.
All right. Sounds good. We stand the journey. Thank you. Try to stay cool out there. Plenty of hydration.